Good evening and welcome to the March 8th meeting of the regular session of City Council. If you're with us tonight and would like to address the council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to the City Council if that item you wish to speak to is not on tonight's agenda. On our podium, we have a light system. After you give your name and address, the green light will appear. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light, and at the end of three minutes, the red light, and we ask that you take your seat at that time. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of a council means matters that the City Council, by law, is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, we will ask Reverend Dr. Ray Johnson will provide an invocation to the council, and afterwards, we will have two Girl Scouts from the Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast Troop 1061 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for his invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but you are under no obligation to do so. Reverend?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to lead public prayer here at the council meeting here on March 8th. As our customary practice within our reformation that we bow our heads when we pray, can we do so now at this time? Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your grace, thank you for your mercy and your compassion toward our city. Thank you, Lord, that you've kept your hand upon each and every one of us, and thank you that you keep watch and watch over all the citizens. We pray now tonight, asking you for your presence to lead in God with wisdom, and even in the days ahead, when there's a time of transition, Lord, that you would continue to keep watch over each and every one of us. So we thank you tonight, and, Lord, we ask that you would be gracious unto our city, that you would bless our city, that you would lift up your countenance upon our city, and give each and every one of us peace. For these things we pray. Amen.
Oh, yes.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We have one proclamation tonight I'd like to do, and I'd like to invite Vice President of Member Engagement, Harry Washington, and Volunteer Leader, Christian Holmes, with the Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast to join me at the podium, please. Good evening. Whereas March 12th, 2022 marks the 100th and 10th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas more than 2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 110 years of this American tradition, with more than 11,000 of them as members of Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast, which serves girls in the southeastern Virginia and northeastern North Carolina. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6th through the 12th of 2022 as Girl Scout Week in the City of Newport News, and applaud the commitment Girl Scouts have made to support the leadership development of America's girls. Proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Price, for inviting us and recognizing the Girl Scouts for 110 years. We're pretty excited. Girl Scouts continue to do what they do, which is support our girls, encourage our girls, and lead them on a successful life journey as they branch into adulthood. So we thank you for taking this time to celebrate with us on our Girl Scout Week this year. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did I have these here?
You can't have all of them.
Yeah, we're just gonna leave them. You all fight Mayor Price.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Chief Drew looking at the...
You can start up on this end.
We will make sure some of you get them. We are now at our public hearing section, page 3, item E1. Is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at 13101 Jefferson Avenue and 13999 Green Grove Lane to A&amp;P Associates LLP. Approval is sought for the conveyance of two city-owned undeveloped parcels to A&amp;P Associates LLP for the total purchase price of $2,100,000. Once acquired by A&amp;P Associates LLP, 7.5 acres of the property located at 13101 Jefferson Avenue will be developed as a relocation site for Casey Subaru. The remaining acreage will be dedicated as a conservation easement. The City Manager recommends approval. And there are no speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
We're now at the consent agenda. Item F contains the following items: Page 18, minutes of the work session of February 22nd; Page 63, minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items F1 and F2, all inclusive?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
We're now at the consent agenda. Item F contains the following items: Page 18, minutes of the work session of February 22nd; Page 63, minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items F1 and F2, all inclusive?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
We are now at other city actions, page 80, item G1. Madam Manager.
Yes, the first item is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement for cost sharing by and between the Hampton Road Sanitation District and the City of Newport News, Virginia, for the James River Treatment Plant Shoreline Stabilization and the City Farm Shoreline Stabilization, and I recommend approval.
Okay. There are no speakers. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
I did have one question I wanted to ask of the City Manager. Has this been an ongoing thing, or is this the first time they've just noticed it?
It's been getting progressively worse till it's gotten to the point we've got to do something immediately, and they were going to take action on their property, so we're partnering with them.
Right, but I just wondered how long it had been, you know, showing effects.
It's been a while.
Okay.
It absolutely has been a while. It's not something that just happened or became aware of. It just got worse. With what some of the improvements they're doing out there, it was timely to make the fixes.
Okay, thank you.
Page 103, item G2. Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a grant agreement by and between the Virginia Resources Authority as administrator of the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund in the City of Newport News, Virginia, and I recommend approval.
There are no speakers, sir. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
I did have one question I wanted to ask of the City Manager. Has this been an ongoing thing, or is this the first time they've just noticed it?
It's been getting progressively worse till it's gotten to the point we've got to do something immediately, and they were going to take action on their property, so we're partnering with them.
Right, but I just wondered how long it had been, you know, showing effects.
It's been a while.
Okay.
It absolutely has been a while. It's not something that just happened or became aware of. It just got worse. With what some of the improvements they're doing out there, it was timely to make the fixes.
Okay, thank you.
Page 103, item G2. Madam Manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a grant agreement by and between the Virginia Resources Authority as administrator of the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund in the City of Newport News, Virginia, and I recommend approval.
There are no speakers, sir. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
We're now at appropriations, page 150, item H. Madam Manager.
Yes, we have one appropriation, and it's a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,347,966.63 in grant funding from the Child Care Stabilization Grant Program through the Virginia Department of Education for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Youth Programs, and I recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve item H1?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think that would have a lot of fun for that much money.
Hopefully, it'll help a lot of kids.
I hope so.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
We are now at comments by citizens germane to the business of council. First speaker I have is Pam Hall. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the southeast community. As we watch the events in Ukraine unfold, thank you for the non-transparent government. Thank you for ignoring the voice of the people and pushing your agenda. Thank you for informing the community Doris Miller will be demolished, and the southeast community will be without a community center for years. Thank you for rewriting Huntington history and the legacy. Autocracy or democracy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, and Madam City Manager. My name is Janie Basemore, and I reside on Hampton Avenue in the city. I want you to know that I am dissatisfied with the relocation plan for Huntington Middle School and your yes votes on the memorandum of understanding between this council and the Newport News School Board. But at this juncture, I think that I have almost done all that I can do to bring about a change, so I will be still. I will stand. I will await the change because I have faith that Huntington Middle School shall rise again at 3401 Orchid Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donna Desiree Reynal? Desiree Reynal, I'm sorry. Close. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Donna Desiree Reynal, and I reside at 201 Hurley Avenue in Hilton Village. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to follow up on having been here a month ago. I was here on February 8th and spoke about the ARPA funding that you all were prepared to vote on and did vote on that evening. I had a number of questions about the allocations of the funding. I had emailed you all earlier that day and then spoke that evening. I didn't expect you to have responded by then, and I did say I looked forward to your responses. I also had emailed City Manager Rolf 48 hours after that meeting. I had not heard from any of you, so I emailed again, and your clerk responded promptly that you had gotten the messages, and I appreciate that very, very much. Following that, one of the seven of you did respond directly, and we had a lovely conversation, so I'm very grateful. And then, following that, City Manager Rolf responded with comprehensive answers to my questions, and I'm very grateful, and in fact, we have since emailed some more. But the other six of you never responded. None of you responded. At the meeting on February 8th, one of you accused those of us who spoke, the citizens, that we were misinformed. One of you said we should put our contact information on the emails we send so that you can have discussions with us. One of you offered to meet with me, to give explanations for the information and have discussions about the initiatives. I did all of those things. I was not misinformed. I gave my contact info, but none of you responded. As an engaged citizen, there are a few ways for me to engage with you as the elected public service leaders you are. Those are coming to meetings, emailing, sharing concerns and questions, and your role as those who are elected is to respond, and you even said that you would, and you have not, and that is the job. That is what public service is. It might interest you to know that I have three children. They are watching. They are observing your leadership. I and we deserve better. This city deserves better. Please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Voss.
Tonight, I am presenting City Council with a change.org petition with 120 signatures and counting in support of Newport News City Council televising and/or live streaming, maybe both, their council work sessions. According to the Daily Press, "All other local governments and Hampton Roads video-record their work sessions. Transparency and accountability are simply good government 101." Citizens deserve to see the decisions our elected officials are making about our city behind closed doors instead of votes being, instead of no votes being held by consensus off the record. I'll read the petition that folks signed. Newport News City Council should televise its work sessions. Sadly, Newport News City Council is the only local government in the entire Hampton Roads region that does not televise or video-record its council work sessions. The result is that many important decisions in our city are made behind closed doors and hidden from public view. It is very important for government transparency and accountability that Newport News City Council begin recording its work sessions for citizens to view. I'll read some quotes from news articles on this issue. Let's see, Daily Press, November 22nd, 2019. "Of all the Hampton Roads cities and peninsula localities, including Gloucester and Isle of White Counties, Newport News is the only one that does not post video recordings of work sessions. Most localities in the region broadcast their work sessions live, either online or on a public-access television channel." Daily Press, August 11th, 2020. "Two Virginia journalism groups are urging the Newport News City Council to begin recording and broadcasting its work sessions. A letter to the City Council from the Society of Professional Journalists, Virginia Pro Chapter states, 'We believe it is crucial for the public to be able to watch the City Council at its work sessions, receive and discuss information related to public issues. This is especially true during the COVID-19 pandemic, when it is difficult and at times unsafe for Newport News residents, as well as journalists, to attend City Council work sessions.'" The Virginia Press Association endorsed the letter. And here, I'm reading from that statement from the Virginia chapter of the Society of Professional Journalists and Virginia Press Association. They called on City Council to televise or video-record their work sessions. They said the information discussed in these meetings is of vital importance to the public. The people of Newport News already funded top-notch broadcast and communications team to run broadcasts of formal City Council meetings. The public deserves to be able to watch the council's work sessions as well. Too often, well, first of all, I just want to say, I used to attend these work sessions because I think they're so important, and I was so disturbed that they're not livestreamed or video-recorded, so I would go and livestream them myself and show them on Facebook so that people could have some idea of what was going on.
Thank you, Ms. Voss.
Please, saying, please don't make excuses. Accountability, transparency, it's very important for your citizens. Thank you very much for your time.
Dr. Matthew Rosario.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Matthew Rosario. I have a doctorate in psychology with a concentration in criminology and justice studies. I am also a veteran of the United States Navy. I am here to speak to you this evening regarding the DJJ overview that was presented to you today during your work session. In that presentation, the youth promising grant was discussed. I want to bring to your attention that I wrote that proposal and was told by DJJ that the proposal was not going to move forward or the application. The presentation you heard today was my original work and program concept. After bringing this up to the Director of Juvenile Justice, he stated that he was told to pivot. What does pivot mean? It brought confusion because if you were told to pivot, why would you submit my concept? Why would you submit my knowledge and my proposal for a grant that was approved? I wanted to bring this to your awareness because it's absolutely appalling that a member of Newport News has gone behind my back after saying he would not move forward with my proposal and submit the proposal. And then when asked, he said, "Thank you for helping bringing a program to Newport News." Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at new business. Madam Manager.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney.
I wasn't going to have anything, but I do want to say one thing. The work sessions are not televised, but they are open. Any member of the public can go to them. The only time they're not is when the council votes to go into a closed session, which is limited by state laws to the topics that can be discussed, and you vote to go into it, and you vote to certify when you come out. The press, members of the public, anybody are able to be there. To the extent, I mean, members of the public are entitled to their opinion, but they're not entitled to their facts, and those meetings are open. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We're glad that you're here with us, either viewing online or presence in council. We want to say thank you to everyone. Even though the Girl Scouts have left, I would like to say congratulations on Girl Scouts Week. I only was a Brownie, but it was inspiring to see them here today, tonight with us, and to lead the pledge. I'd like to thank the City Manager and all of the city staff for such a wonderful weekend for our One City Weekend. It was fantastic. The weather was beautiful. Councilwoman Vick and I finished a 5K strong. It was great. Want to say thank you to all who made that happen. Nautilus Mile was great with our children, especially to run that race. Sunday was the marathon, and I'm excited because we had the first, the winner of the marathon was a female. Yay. And then her husband came right behind her. So that was fantastic to see them come together, and after having a conversation with him, I asked him if he let her win. He said, "Absolutely not. She's a professional runner." I'm like, "Oh, okay." But she encouraged us to come out and do the marathon next year, but I don't think that's going to happen. But we did have fun. I'd like to say we do have one announcement, and Dr. Price's birthday is this Friday, I believe.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Was that tomorrow?
Go to his county.
This Thursday. So happy birthday to you, Mayor Price. We're happy for you.
I don't think...
We're negotiating, Price.
Price. Okay, I'd like to say it's been great, an opportunity to sit in some of the mayor's youth commission meetings. They are a great group of individuals, and I do want to announce the graduating seniors. They did tell us what colleges that they have been accepted to. We have Sophie Atkins. She's been... accepted to. We have Sophie Atkins. She's been accepted at UVA. Ian Kalupaton, he has been accepted at Virginia Tech. Nea Felton, she has been accepted at Cornell University. Elysiana Floyd, she has been accepted at Hampton University. See? Denaya Hood, her first choice is Columbia University and her second choice is Cornell. Zaria Lucas, she has been accepted into 25 schools and her preference is Virginia State University. And then, Michael Mason, he has been accepted into James Madison University. Can we give our young people a hand? Because I think they deserve it. Thank you. I think it's important to recognize their accomplishments and celebrate them. Celebrate them publicly. The last thing I'd like to announce is on Thursday, we normally have our South District Town Hall meeting, your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting at Midtown Community Center. And we had hoped to be able to do that on this Thursday. However, because we do have a public meeting for the redistricting on tomorrow night at, tell me where.
City Center.
City Center. Thank you. James Room. Since we are having that tomorrow, we're inviting everyone from, especially Huntington, North Huntington Heights, because we were going to have a conversation around traffic on Thursday. So, I just invite you all, everyone, to come out to the redistricting meeting on tomorrow, I mean, on tomorrow at James River, at the James Room. And then, on Thursday, at Down and Grows Culture Arts Center. Both of those meetings will take place from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Yes, and good evening. Also, want to thank everyone who is watching and who's here in chambers on tonight. I'll be real quick. I just want to acknowledge the Minchfield High School Girls Basketball Team as they'll be playing for the state championship representing the city on Friday at 6:00 at VCU up in Richmond. So, if you are a fan, or if you aren't a fan, this was, those young ladies, good luck and hope they can bring another state championship back to the city. We could celebrate them like we did our Chris Newport Female Soccer Team. So, just wanted to let everybody know and be aware of who you can root for on Friday night. Minchfield High School Women's Basketball Team as they represent us, represent the city for the state championship. And that's all I have, Mayor Price.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
For those of you who have not been following the discussion council's been having on airing and recording work sessions, I can honestly say that this was not my idea, that this was a proposal brought forward by my fellow councilperson, Councilwoman Pat Woodbury, the first year that I was on council. At that time, I was not in the council meeting, but responded to the Daily Press afterwards as another council member did. And it seemed like we had four votes. It seemed like we could get this done. A few months later, I raised this issue again at work sessions and we became diverted. There was a concern about the cost to taxpayers and it seemed reasonable to look into that. And then, around that time, COVID came. And during our Zoom sessions, we did not do work sessions. So, things got on the back burner. And then, last year, I suggested that we look into this again. And a couple of months ago, we discussed this in a work session. At that work session, we did not have a majority to be able to move forward. At that work session, this measure was supported by Councilwoman Woodbury, Councilman Harris, and myself. However, four weeks ago, in the discussions here in this chamber, our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Cherry, said that she wished everyone in Newport News, or everyone here, could hear what I did in work sessions. I expected her that night to introduce a motion to air and record work sessions. She did not. She did not introduce that motion two weeks ago. So, therefore, because this is something I feel strongly about, and I believe in transparency in government, and I believe in the public having information on what we're considering as a city, and I believe in the public being able to provide input to the council on issues that we're addressing, and I believe that working people who cannot take off at 4:00 in the afternoon and sit in our work sessions deserve to know what's going on in our city, along with people who have mobility issues, I therefore move, at the City of Newport News, air and record work sessions from now on.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none. Councilwoman Scott. Excuse me. Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for joining us, via electronic or here in person. We really appreciate your participation and your suggestions, your opinions, your ideas. They're all welcome here. I just have a few things, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Planning Department and Ms. Tulu, I hope I'm not messing her name up, for the presentation on the redistricting at the Demi Community Center last evening. It was a very lively discussion there. And I encourage you all to go to the other ones that Dr. Cherry mentioned earlier at City Center on Wednesday and at Down and Grows on Thursday. It's a lot of good information and it affects all of us. So, we want you to see it for yourself before we make a decision. And then, some come down and say they didn't have any input. So, you have an opportunity and it's up to you to get involved, to have your say. But ultimately, the council will discuss it and have their last say on what that is before it goes to the State Attorney General. Also, I want to thank the, all of the different speakers who came to the North District Town Hall meeting on this past Monday. We had open discussions and we had people from all different departments coming in. It was such a wealth of information that we're going to do the same thing again on March 28th. It's going to be an open meeting. So, if you all have anything you want to bring to the meeting, please do. The Department of Development always comes and has information. Planning comes. And I have to congratulate Lieutenant Brandon Rackhamar, I think I'm pronouncing, am I getting that correctly, who is assistant to Captain Cupp up in the North District. He came and spoke for the first time. And I just encourage you all to stay engaged. And if you have information to share, please do. And whenever we have something to share with you, we like to do as well. Also, I just wanted to let the citizens know, you hear a little bit here and there about Sister Cities Newport News. We used to travel and they used to come over, our siblings in Greyswall and Taijo and.
Dear Galway.
Dear Galway. Thank you. Having a senior moment. Used to come over and visit. And now, we are a friendship city with Niger in France and working on one with Ireland. So, I'm looking forward to one in one of the African countries soon to be recognized. But Kate Helwig does an awesome job. She's the executive director, has been there forever. And she does an awesome job. She gets some support from the city, but she raises most of the money, her and the committee, our Board of Directors. They raise money. They put on programs. They do an awesome job. Every Sunday, they have music at noon. So, if you're in City Center, make sure I'm saying this right before I speak too far. Yeah, on March 11th, from noon to 1:00, they have something called Relaxing Java Time. You can come by and Kristy Miller, violin, Harry Wu violin, Melvin Loff plays the harp. And just a chance to come back, grab your lunch and come by and just chill. Or Taces across the street. You can go across the street and grab your lunch and come over and enjoy some time. And she does this for two reasons. One, just to promote diversity among the cultures. But secondly, she wants you all to come and see the city space. That has been just a blessing to this organization. And it's through partnerships and collaborations that she has that space. And the city is in great support of it. And we just appreciate all that goes into what Kate Helwig and Sister Cities Newport News and the board does. So, I just wanted to say that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vick.
Yes, I certainly would like to thank Owen and the entire, everyone who was a part of our One City Weekend. Was fabulous this weekend. I heard that, according to the mayor, it wasn't as good of weather for the runners, but for the walkers, it was great. Great. I had the worst time ever, though, I have to say. And it was a 5K. I had the worst time because I saw a friend on the, those people who know me know that I love to talk and we talked the whole walk. So, I messed up my time. But I'm going to tell you, I did, this year, had a chance to be at the start of the Nautical Mile. And I'm telling you, when we're out in public, so many times, we don't get to really see kids unless we go to the schools. But the look on those young children's faces as they were lining up, several of them came and told me, "I'm going to be, I'm going to come in first." That competitive spirit that was out there and the band, the band that was playing from the Catherine Johnson Elementary School, I tell you, they were a group of professionals. I was so excited. And Mr. Mayor, that's why I didn't get to come over there for the awards because I was over there cheering them on. But the excitement on Sunday at 23rd Street with the bands and the food and everything, we really had a fabulous weekend. And just the look on the citizens' face. One gentleman I met, took a picture with, he was in the marathon. And he actually, this was his 43rd state doing a marathon. And he's going around doing 50, all 50 states. So, it was a great time had by all. And also, I wanted to just, since I see Rob Coleman out here in the audience, I wanted to talk about the Steak and Burger fundraiser that's coming up, March the 17th. I've already got my ticket. And but it's a fundraiser to help the Boys and Girls Club. So, it's always a great time and they have great food. So, if you can, if you all can support him, he can give you the information. I'm putting him on the spot tonight, to be able to come March 17th, and I believe it's at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. at the Holiday Inn, I'm sorry.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock at the Holiday Inn on Omni Boulevard. So, it's always a great time had by all who attend. And lastly, the Southeast Community Coalition, it's a group of organizations and pastors that we have started, have been meeting, but to really provide safe spaces for the youth in the Southeast community. And so, Friday night, March the 12th, Doris Miller will be hosting the family movie night. And that starts at 6:00. And so, if you want to attend, please come out. The movie will be Space Jam.
Friday's the 11th.
I mean, okay, Saturday. I'm sorry.
Is it Saturday?
Saturday, March the 12th. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But we will be providing lots of snacks. So, please come out, bring the kids for Space Jam. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury.
So, which one of you won?
Sandra was running. She was doing, I was just.
You were talking.
Right.
That's what I figured.
I was looking for Tina. I'm like, where is Tina?
Doing what she does best. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming down and thank you for being online with us. I have just one thing to say. You know, I can say ditto to everything that has been said, but there's no need for me to say it again. I do want to recognize, though, one of our Newport News firefighters who earned statewide recognition as the Firefighter of the Year 2021 Award from the governor. His name is Andrew Zisk, I think is the way it's pronounced. And he has been with the city's fire department since 2011. And there was a wonderful article about him in the paper. I just think that we've got so many good people in our fire department and our police department. They just stand out. Well, we saw a program this afternoon that's going to make it into the whole United States, I'm sure. But one of our initiatives done by the chief of police and our fire chief. So, stay tuned. Watch us on the map. And yes, I will meet with you. I'm sorry, I called, I sent an email to the City Manager and asked her if she was going to answer all your questions. So, I did not feel like you needed to hear. But I will meet with you and don't leave tonight until we set a date. Thank you.
I believe you had something else.
Yes, just one thing. I was trying not to be redundant, Mr. Mayor, about talking about the marathon. But I would be remiss if I did not give kudos to Owen Miller, who heads up the One City Marathon. And he is so humble. And he knows that he works really hard to make this happen. So, he is the one person I had the honor of opening up, doing the opening speech at the One City Marathon. At 6:30 in the morning, I was there, y'all. They didn't have to wait for me.
They didn't have to wait.
But more importantly.
Did you camp tonight?
No. I'm practicing getting up early. But more importantly.
No traffic?
See, they're real funny. But more importantly, the ride through the neighborhood, we had a chance to wave and greet the citizens. And I mean, he's waving from the left and I'm waving from the right and videotaping. And if you go to my Facebook page, you'll see most of the ride out. And then, we had a chance to U-turn and go back so that we could see the runners coming towards us because we are actually leading the race. We're in front of them. So, it was just an honor to do this. And I would have been remiss if I did not mention how hard he worked. And we talked about the parallel between what he does for the One City Marathon, which he will start again next month for next year. And I was telling him about what I do for the food drive. Once you finish, you get started all over again. So, it's repetitive. You never stop. So, Owen, just a special thank you to you and Mayor Manager and your team and everybody who were the wind beneath his wings. I appreciate his whole team. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to also jump in about the Eighth Annual Marathon Weekend. It was tremendous success. Heard a lot of response. I think people enjoyed the 5K versus 8, I think. Hopefully, the numbers will, I think, more people willing to do that one than the 8K.
Talk more.
I want to thank the volunteer.
I'm waiting for the bicycle.
I'm waiting for the bicycle, too. Many volunteers and city employers who work, you know, countless hours on this effort. So, we want to thank our sponsors and the businesses for their support and the residents who cheer the runners. You know, I think the runners also, that's, I think, unique for our race. As they run through the city, they have so many people that are, you know, walking with them or talking or cheering them on. So, I appreciate the encouragement they got. And lastly, I just want to talk about March is Red Cross Month. And I want to recognize and thank the Red Cross for all the volunteers and donors and what they do. And if you can, please donate blood. It is needed. That is it. Is there anything else anyone has?
I'm supposed to divvy up those cookies.
I'm going to do that.
Amen.
All right. And may what you say and do uplift the City of Newport News. We send a jar.